We're going to call this meeting to order. It is Tuesday, November 4th, 3:00 PM. We're going to have our invocation by Councilmember Cliff Smith, pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Vince Maggio. Everybody, please stand.
This is great. Father, we come before you today so thankful for another day here on planet Earth. Thank you for your blessings and your protection. God, as we go through this meeting, we just ask that you would give us the wisdom to make decisions that bless you and benefit the majority of the citizens. God, remind us that each one of us are placed here for a certain purpose at this time in our lives. Help us to know what that purpose is and then to fulfill that. But in all things, give you honor and glory. We ask it in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please follow me, same pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Chris Smith.
Here.
Mr. Cochran.
Here.
Mr. Hammond.
Here.
Mrs. Ross.
Here.
Mr. Cliff Smith.
Here.
Mr. Gerard.
Here.
Mr. Maggio.
Here.
All present. In accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings laws and the adopted Bojor City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the city council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda items may approach and state their names and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. All other audience members are asked to observe the meeting quietly. If a board member has a conflict of interest on any of the items included on this agenda, please disclose that conflict now.
All right, council. Ceremonial matters and recognition of guests. Do we have a couple of BYO students sitting in the audience? Y'all want to come up and introduce yourselves? This is part of your grade. We'll be giving you a A, B, C, or D, depending on how well you introduce yourself. So just tell us who you are and what school you represent.
I'm Sydney Robinson. I go to Benton High School.
I'm Isabella Smith. I go to Parkway High School.
And I'm Trinity Ramey. And I go to Parkway High School.
Awesome. Well, welcome to the Bojor City Council. I hope you learned a lot today.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
A-plus performance.
A-plus performance. I agree. All right, council. I need a motion to approve today's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion by Councilmember Hammond, second by Councilwoman Ross. Is there any public comment on today's agenda?
Don't worry about it. I'm good. Sorry. Computer's broke.
Mr. Smith, I will say that, remind that the voting board will not be working today.
Oh, yes, yes. Quick, quick update. Our vote, our voting machines are not working today, so nothing will be displayed on the screen. Everything will be voice vote today. So, motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilwoman Ross. Public comment. Is there any comment from the council? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry. I took your, I took your line.
That's all right. You're in.
Counsel, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the October 21st, 2025 regular council meeting and dispense with the reading.
So moved. Second.
All right, motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Cliff Smith. Is there any public comment on our minutes? Comments from the council? Counsel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries.
All right, bids?
This opening of sealed bids for bid number 2025-1011R, a rebid for demolition of 2656 Old Minden Road.
Good afternoon, council. Mayor Chandler. We're opening bids again for two demolition projects. There were errors on the bid form and all those bids were rejected, so we've rebid these now. The engineer's estimate on 2656 Old Minden Road is $29,000. It is an asbestos job. And we have two bidders.
Hold on a second. Let whoever's phone's going off.
Yeah, real quick. Whoever has their phone, please put it on silent. Go ahead.
Okay, the first bid is from Abatement Services. They do have their bid bond and they, there was not a place to acknowledge the bid, but they had to know it to get it in here. The total bid amount for that is $24,523. Okay, the second bid is from Lathan Construction. He does have his bid bond and his bid is for $24,696. I ask that you approve the reading of these bids.
I need a motion for the bid.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Cliff Smith, second by Councilman Maggio. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? All right, council, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number 2025-562R, a rebid for demolition of 2413 Mariko Street.
Okay, same situation. This is a rebid. Both bids previously were rejected. The engineer's estimate on this is $31,000. Okay, the first bid is from Abatement Services. He has his bid bond. His total bid amount is $20,840. The next bid is from Lathan Construction. He does have his bin bod, bid bond, and his total is $23,370. And I ask that you approve the reading of these bids.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hammond, a second by Councilman Gerard. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? All right, council, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brooke, how are you? All right, public hearing, actions on unfinished business. The 2026 Operating in Capital Budgets Public Hearing will be held at a special meeting on November the 11th, 2025, at 3:00 PM. During the same meeting and following the public hearing, the vote on possible adoption will be held.
So for anyone curious, we're not voting on the second reading of the budget today. That'll happen next Tuesday, 3:00 PM in this room.
Adopting ordinance to authorize the installation of all-way stop control at the intersections of Barberry Lane and Pampas Drive and at Anita Street and Impala Drive in the city of Bojor City. Final reading?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilwoman Ross. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? Mr. Maginot, did you complete your traffic study?
Good afternoon, council. Mayor. Yes, we did finish up those two studies. We found that they were not warranted, so I just ask that you consider that in your vote.
Thank you, sir. Anything else from the council?
Yeah. I understand that, you know, the specs of those studies that they do are very, very, very broad when 99% of the traffic in these situat, subdivisions, and the problems that we are having are in the morning times and in the evening times when the influx of people leaving between the hours of 6:00 and 8:00 o'clock in the morning going to work is when the problem is and when kids are outside playing and that type of stuff. That is the reason that both myself and Councilwoman Ross have brought this ordinance to the city. You know, even though it is not warranted from a, a study, it is still warranted for the citizens that live there and want this. That is, that is the whole reason for bringing this. I don't just drive around a subdivision saying, hey, I want to put a stop sign there. It is brought because the citizens have come to us and this is what they want.
Thank you, Councilman Hammond, Councilwoman Ross.
And it's a safety issue.
Thank you. Is there any other comments from the council? All right, council, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to amend Section 14-33 of the Bojor City Code of Ordnances relative to the raising of poultry. Final reading?
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Ross, second by Councilman Chris Smith. Counsel, before we go any further, I'd like to offer two amendments to this, should it pass. Amendment number one, for anyone wanting to raise poultry, that there be a $100 per year permit fee on the, on the poultry. And second, nevermind, scratch that, just, just the one amendment.
Okay. Are you wanting to do that at this time and reintroduce it, or are you wanting to vote on it now and see what happens? If we, if you put this amendment in there at this moment, it will be a reintroduction as amended.
Okay, so we can, we can just, if this were to pass at the next meeting, I could just do it. I could just amend this. Okay, let's do that.
Yes, sir.
All right, that'll keep, make it easier. All right, so scratch that.
This is the final reading.
Well, once it becomes adopted, I'll just, I'll just draft an ordinance amending it, similar to how this is. All right. Well, everybody knows my intention, then. If this passes, then we'll put a permit fee on there. All right, is there any public comment? Yes, ma'am, you can come up. Make sure to state your name and address for the record, and there's a sign-in sheet that we need you to sign.
Good afternoon. My name is Linda Clements and I live on Evangelion Circle. I'm a retired school teacher and I was raised on a farm around lots of chickens. I could write a short thesis on chickens and chicken behavior. However, there are some things I want to bring to your attention. Number one, chickens are natural foragers. They like to be free. They do not like to be enclosed. And they will do whatever they can do to squeeze under, claw under, fly over their enclosure. Their droppings are very acidic and will eat right through the clear coat on your car and right into the paint or mess up your lawn furniture. Number three, they attract rodents, raccoons, all kinds of varmints that we really don't need in our neighborhood. Next, they can carry diseases like salmonella and even avian flu. And lastly, their odor that they create does not stay in the backyard of the person with whom they reside. When the wind blows, it just whiffs over the neighborhood. And for those reasons, I think chickens ought to be in a rural area and not in our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, yes, thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
David Crockett, 653 Domain Drive, Bojor City, Louisiana. I would like to hear today. I hope you will expound on why you think there ought to be a $100 fee for this. You don't have a fee for dogs. You don't have a fee for cats. You don't have other things like that. People raise chickens in cities around the country. And you can, it's the responsibility of the owner to do that. This issue is really about embracing community freedom. I love it that this is brought up, and I think it's a great opportunity for family. Dogs bark, dogs dig, cats roam, they pee on your front doors, they go crawl around on your cars and leave paw prints. There, there are negatives about anything you want. Cats make your, your flower beds, their litter boxes, and you smell them all the time. So this is not a, a simple issue about a few complaints. They're not trying to make a business, Ms. Ross. They're usually pets and hobbies and things that people enjoy. Some of my friends who have chickens in your district, Mr. Maggio, do it because they love the chickens. There were some absurd things that were said about that, very big generalizations. I don't think you'd even read the ordinance before the last meeting. For chickens, we're not talking about raising a business. So I think this is kind of like bordering on criticizing something that's absurd. Backyard hens deserve the same fair and balanced approach that you have for other things. You may be taking away a child's 4-H project. So I just think you should open up your minds a little bit. This is a well-written ordinance. You can write other changes, but I don't know why you would charge people $100. Maybe impose a $100 fine if you have a problem or a $50 fine that would get somebody's notice. Neighbors work with neighbors. There's an obvious solution to this, which is you can put up a privacy fence. That's what people do when they want to hide a boat, an RV, backyard play, toys, noises, and other things. So I just think this is something that's reasonable. This is time to let the people have a little bit of a choice rather than just say no. Thank you. I'll write my name.
Mr. Crockett, is there any other public comment?
Yes, I'm Brenda Davis. I'm the one who spoke to all of you, all of, all but Mr. Gerard. I believe he was out of town. I'm the one who brought up the whole chicken issue, and I've spoke to every one of you. And I know some of y'all's concerns were why, I mean, a couple of y'all even said, why would you even want chickens? I mean, that's not really the issue, though, is it? I mean, I could look at people and say, why do you want cats? Why do you want dogs? I mean, what's the difference? I mean, these chickens are going to be kept in a coop. They're not going to be free-ranging in your backyard. You know, I don't know if you've ever seen a tractor supply, all the small coops, where you can build your own. But I mean, they will be contained. And if they're not contained, then you can do something about it then. But right now, we also have leash laws and everything else in this city, but yet we see, you know, dogs and cats running all over the place. But we haven't outlawed them, have we? So I just think putting a blanket on, oh, no chickens, because this possibly can happen. We already know what happens with cats and dogs, but we haven't outlawed them. So I just think that we just need to be a little bit more open-minded. And I know some of y'all's personal preferences is that you don't like the chickens. You don't, you think it's a good idea. But make people responsible, and if it's a complaint about smell, then go out and investigate it. It'd be like any other smell. I live in South Bojor. I want to talk to you about your water system. I mean, it blows over here in my backyard all the time. I mean, it's a joke with my family going down to Parkway. You know, you're all of a sudden, you're driving along and go, ah, you want to gag. So if we want to talk about smell, let's talk about Bojor City's responsibility about smell. So that's all I want to say, is that I just think you need to be a little bit more open-minded when you're thinking about this and not just go on your own personal preferences.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? All right, council? Any comment from the council?
Mr. President.
Yeah, Ms. Maggio.
They passed an ordinance in 1964 and I believe 1980 about this, and we had it four years ago. I went out to see some houses. You might, you, one might have been clean, the other four or five is just really messy. You know, when is this going to start? I had one, they called me this past week. I want my goat back. When is, when is, you know, but we got to put a start to it. People nowadays, I mean, right by the, in neighborhoods, they don't even keep the yard up, more or less a chicken coop. You might get two or three, but other than that, they ain't going to do it. So that's why I can't vote no. It ain't clean, it ain't safe, and it ain't healthy, just can't, I can't support it.
Mr. Smith, I'm sorry. The audience is rather loud at the moment.
Yeah. If everybody could please keep it quiet so we could have a debate on the issues at hand, that would be beneficial. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Maggio.
Thank you.
Is there any other comment from the council? Councilman Smith?
The, I, I respect the right of, of those who would like to have poultry in their backyards. But at the same time, I have to respect the rights of those who do not want poultry in their neighborhoods. We're kind of caught in, in a bad situation, in my opinion, that first off, that we're even having this, this discussion. But we run the risk, and every time we take a vote, we run a risk of making 51% of the people happy and 49% unhappy, or vice versa. So I, I can't buy into the fact that we're taking rights away from somebody by not allowing them to have chickens when we're also extending rights to those who do not want chickens next door to them. So I need a better excuse than we're taking your rights away.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Is there any other comment from the council?
I want to make a quick comment. I was just going to, it's the same. My district's mainly neighborhoods. I went out of my way and I just got back home to call, you know, 40, 50 people in my district, different neighborhoods, and I got a resounding no to the chicken situation. Personally, I've always wanted chickens, so I would say if it was my decision and I was not representing my people, then I would probably lean that way. But I have to do what my voters want, and that's what I'm elected to do. On the second end, I also have some medical issues, and chickens are a hard no for my medical issues. And I, I don't like the thought of someone moves into the city knowing they're safe because they have a law in place. And I know laws do change, but I don't like the thought that you come to get away from that kind of thing and then it's kind of thrown upon you. So those are kind of my two hangups and kind of lead me to why I'm going to vote the way I do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Gerard. Any other counsel comment?
I would just say to the audience and to the councilmen that I did run an audit and I called around and I visited around, and the negative outweighed the positive about the poultry.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Hammond? You're the only one that hadn't said anything, given you the opportunity.
Well, I mean, I mean, I'm the one that brought this ordinance up. You know, South Bojor, where my district is, we're a little bit of both. We're a little bit of the city and we're a little bit of country. So I know people that have chickens in neighborhoods. Do I do anything about it? No. You know, we, we, in South Bojor, we, you know, we have Rossi Lee Street where you can have cows and horses and you're in the city limits. They're grandfathered in. So then you're going to tell somebody one street over, you can't even have a chicken when these people, there's one house on Rossi Lee, I think they got about 30 chickens. There's not a thing you can do about it because they're grandfathered in. So, I mean, I'm a yes vote. I mean, I know I'm going to lose, but I'm going to vote. I'm the one, I can't really bring up an ordinance and then vote no against it. So.
Is there any other comments? All that said, council, it's time to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstain?
Can I just for a roll call vote on that, please?
Sure.
If you can't do electronic voting?
Sure.
Mr. Hammond.
I'll ask. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm a yea.
Mrs. Ross.
A nay.
Mr. Chris Smith.
I'm a yea.
Mr. Cliff Smith.
Nay.
Mr. Gerard.
Nay.
Mr. Maggio.
Nay.
Mr. Cochran.
Nay.
Motion fails.
Man, it seems like the old days, Councilman Smith.
Sorry. Adopting ordinance to amend Sections 114-4 and 114-32 of the Code of Ordnances of Bojor City, Louisiana, to adjust water and deposit rates in public utilities. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hammond, a second by Councilman Gerard. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? Counsel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
We may have a comment. Mr. President.
Can I have a comment?
Is it, is it, is it about water?
About the chickens.
No, ma'am, we've already moved past that issue.
So what is it? I'm hard of hearing and I didn't hear.
It failed.
It failed?
Yes, ma'am.
What does that mean?
That chickens are still going to be illegal inside city limits.
It says what?
That chickens are still going to be illegal out, inside city limits.
Well, number one, I have chickens.
Ma'am, we've already voted on this.
I don't care. I have to say what I want to say.
Ma'am, we have already voted on this. You had an opportunity to public comment.
Can I make a, can I talk?
Ma'am, we, we have got to move on to other business. It failed on a vote of five to two. We, we had it open for public comment. We waited and let everybody who wanted to speak, speak. We're, we're, we're to-
Didn't hear that. I'm hard of hearing.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. We're talking about water rates. We're not, we've moved past the chickens.
And number one, y'all got the microphones in front of you, but you never use the microphones for the, us people down here that are hard of hearing, can't hear you.
Ma'am, we've moved past the chickens.
Okay, what are we going to talk about now? I want to talk about whatever you want to talk about.
Ma'am, we are taking a vote on adopting an ordinance to adjust the water rates on fire hydrants and, and mobile meters. Do you have, if you have a comment on that, we can hear your comment on that.
Of what?
On water rates for fire hydrants and mobile meters. If you have a comment on that, we'll listen to your comment on that, but we've already moved past the chickens.
So what are you going to do about my chickens?
Ma'am, we're not doing anything about your chickens. Chickens are, we didn't, this ordinance did not pass, so chickens are now illegal and, or remain illegal inside of Bojor City limits.
It's too bad y'all don't have one.
Ma'am, we have moved past the chicken. We have moved past the chickens. Please have a seat.
Okay, let's talk about dogs.
Ma'am, we have moved past the chickens. Please have a seat. Please have a seat. I'm sorry, before I was interrupted, we were taking a vote. Let's start it over, because I don't know what the vote was. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries.
Yes, sir. Adopt an ordinance to declare certain improvements to immovable property owned by the City of Bossier City, a surplus to the city's need, and provide for disposal according to law. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hammonds, a second by Councilman Cliff Smith. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. President. People could please stop talking in the audience?
Yes.
They say they have a hard time hearing, but so do we up here with everything echoing.
Yes, if, I'm going to ask, this is going to be the second time that I've asked today for people to please respect our rules. The marshals are here, and if you are going to be disruptive, we will ask you to step outside of the meeting to hold a conversation. Thank you. Did we get a motion in a second? I'm sorry. Yes, Hammonds and Councilman Smith. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? All right, council, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Adopt an ordinance to approve report of change order one for the lateral B-one ditch paving project with an increase of a hundred and seventy-one thousand twenty-five dollars for a total contract price of two million one hundred thirty-six dollars, and, one million one hundred thirty-six thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Ross, a second by Councilman Maggio. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? All right, council, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance limiting financial contributions to non-governmental organizations and establishing procedures for accountability and repeal all ordinances in conflict therewith. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hammonds, a second by Councilman Maggio?
Maggio.
Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? All right, council, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I wanted to say something.
I'm sorry.
Who, who's going to be monitoring this and taking the information from, about these nonprofit organizations that we're going to make donations to? Who's going to be responsible for taking care of that?
So, the, uh, uh, as I appreciate it, Ms. Nottingham's out, out of town, but, uh, so, Mayor Chandler, if I get this wrong, you can correct me, but, uh, uh, they're going to notify anybody who we've previously given money to, to let them know what our new policies are going to be going forward. Every year on September first, they will have to, uh, by September first, they will have to submit their application. It will be vetted by the mayor's office, and if he chooses to fund them or not fund them, and then it will be passed on to the council during our normal budget process. Did I kind of get that right? Okay.
Thank you.
And also, if the CEA is coming up for renewal, if their CEA is ending, it's up to the organization to contact us to see, to let us know if they would wish to renew it and go through the process again. It's not going to be an automatic, they have to do it again, and it's up to them.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions? Okay, council, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to amend ordinance eighty-four of two thousand twenty-five to appropriate sixty thousand dollars from the general fund fund balance to retain professional services agreement with firm Carr, Riggs, and Ingram to perform the tax reduction audit. Final reading.
So move. Second.
Motion by Councilman Gerard, second by Councilman Cliff Smith. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? Council, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries.
New business.
Adopt an ordinance amending ordinance one-thirty-three of two thousand eighteen by changing the zoning classification of a certain tract of land being one point eight three-seven acres, more or less, from RLD, residential low-density, to B-two, limited business, located at forty-two oh-eight Benton Road, Bossier City, Louisiana. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Ross, second by Councilman Maggio. Is there any public comment? Ms. Brown? Is this the, uh, the one that we, we sent back to you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, this is the case that was remanded back. We heard it as a B-two. We approved it in October, and here we are today.
Sounds good, thank you. Make sure you state your name and address and sign.
James R. Daisy, one-zero-eight Fannin Drive, Benton, Louisiana. I'm the owner of A.J. Real Estate Holdings, just, uh, if you have any questions or anything. From B-three to B-two, you guys didn't want to approve B-three, so, I sent it back to the MPC for B-two, and here we are.
All right, sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for him? No? Okay, thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment on this? Council, does anybody have anything? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any abstain? Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hammonds?
Nay.
Mrs. Ross?
Yea.
Mr. Chris Smith?
Yea.
Mr. Cliff Smith?
Nay.
Mr. Joel Gerard?
Yea.
Mr. Vince Maggio?
Nay.
Mr. Creighton Cochran?
Nay.
Motion fails.
All right.
Adopt an ordinance approving a conditional use on a tract of land located at thirteen fifteen North Gate Road, Bossier City, Louisiana, for a hundred and forty-foot telecommunications tower with a two-foot lightning rod. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Uh, motion by Councilman Hammonds, second by Councilwoman Ross. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council?
Uh, yeah, Mr. President. Um, Ms. Brown, is, has this already been, I, I, I mean, I'm sure it has. This is kind of a dumb question. Has this been approved by Bark, I mean, by Barkstall, is it going to be? I know that we can only go so high with stuff around the base.
Yes, they actually reduced the height based on the basis recommendation.
Okay.
Uh, they're okay with the current height as it stands today.
And where it does, um-
Behind the VFW.
This is, yeah.
Oh, it's going right behind the VFW hall, right there?
Right before you get to Winchester on North Gate, yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
And they presented a follow letter. It's been approved by our office. But yes, they have vetted it with Barkstall Air Force Base, which had some concerns, and they sustained and re- reduced the height overall. So, we approved it with that recommendation.
Okay. So if it falls, it's going to hit either the VFW or all those homes?
Typically, it collapses upon itself. It doesn't completely collapse over.
Well, I mean, I'm just kind of going by what we had happen at Station Four
Yes, sir.
um, a while back, when a driver lost control and hit the, um, communication tower down there. And luckily, it did not hit the fire station. Um, okay. And this is a AT&amp;T tower? Is that what this is?
Yes. Mm-hmm, and they will allow co-location, so we don't have to have continuous height, and, you know, infrastructure in our jurisdiction.
Okay.
Anything else, Councilman Hammonds?
None.
All right, any other council?
I have a quick question. Uh, what type of capabilities are, uh, what will this offer to our residents? Does anybody from AT&amp;T want to come shed some light? I'm not sure what this tower does, but I'm sure people in the area would like to know.
Uh, good afternoon, council. Mr. Mayor, I'm John Throckmorton. I'm with Municipal Communications. I live at twenty-four thirty-two Chimney Springs Drive, Marietta, Georgia. Came in this morning, so, um, this is an area that AT&amp;T has been trying to cover for years. Our company, Municipal Communications, will build and operate the tower. We're what's called a neutral host. So it's available for not just AT&amp;T, but Verizon, T-Mobile, any other carriers that come about in the next fifty years or so. It'll incorporate the latest technology, which is 5G. Um, it will also have FirstNet, which is a common emergency response communication sort of ability that kind of integrates all, uh, first response capabilities. So, um, what these towers do is they don't, won't just improve coverage in the immediate vicinity, which is needed. They also kind of, uh, work as a network. So it's going to reduce demand on all the other towers in the area. It's going to make the overall network for Bossier City work a little bit more, um, you know, provide a little bit more capacity, fewer drop calls, that kind of thing. So, it'll improve coverage, not just for the residents, but emergency responders, and then Bossier City kind of indirectly and more broadly.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And as a great landlord also, I'm a member of the VFW, so kind of know that rent gets plugged right back into the community, scholarships, and community activities, that kind of thing.
Excellent.
Thank you. If you wouldn't mind, could you sign the sheet in front of you? Thank you.
Print and, print your name and address, please.
Uh, council, is there any other comments?
I don't like that.
Yeah, go ahead.
President, I don't like that. Ms. Brown, do, uh, by putting towers up like that in communities, do the community get any notice of these towers being put up? Or does something just goes up automatically, and the citizen that live in that area is not notified of it being put up?
Uh, we consider this the same as a zoning amendment, so everyone within three hundred feet is notified of the intent of the cell tower.
I'm sorry, repeat that.
So everyone within three hundred feet of the cell tower was notified.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else from Ms. Brown? Thank you, as always. All right, council, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to expand and enlarge the existing industrial tax exemption program for Selectson. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hammonds, second by Councilman Cliff Smith. Is there any public comment? Any com- Go ahead. Welcome. Just state your name and address for the record, and if you can sign the sheet in front of you as well.
Sure, I'm Danita Hartman. I'm the controller at Selection. We're just here to see if you guys have any questions for us today.
Does anyone have any questions for them?
Do I need to say the address of Selection?
Oh, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Fifty thirty-one Hazel Jones Road in Bossier.
Does anybody have anything for them?
How many people are y'all employing out there now?
We currently employ about four hundred and fifty. It's increased, um, since last year. I'm sorry, I keep-
No, you're fine.
Bobbing and weaving. You guys are not ready for me today.
Yeah.
Um, and I'm nervous, so I'm not doing very good.
Oh, don't be nervous. We haven't put anybody in jail in like, a couple of days.
Um, about four hundred and fifty. Primarily, what we do is, uh, AT&amp;T. Um, so we do telecommunications, and then we also, uh, support the utility industry. We, um, help build critical infrastructure, like wood pole equivalents. They look like the wood poles that utility lines are on, but they're metal.
Well, I just want to say thank y'all for being here in Bossier City.
Thank you for having us.
And I know y'all, y'all survived some hard times in that industry, but thank you so much for sticking it out and staying here in Bossier City.
I'm a Louisiana girl, so I'm not going anywhere.
I can go back as far as when I was a kid. Um, a friend of my father's built that building when, um, it was Linux way back in the day, so, um, that, that's- Wait, that's, yeah, I am old. So, but yeah, thank y'all so much.
And we've actually expanded. We had vacated our forty-nine sixteen Hazel Jones location. We're back in there. We're trying to kick the other guys out, but-
That's fine, keep expanding, we love that.
Anybody else have anything? Yes, sir, Miss Cochran.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, again, thank you guys for being in town. Uh, Mr. Jacobs, are, are Selection, uh, in compliance with all the mandates that we gave on them, or the stipulations toward this?
They are. What, what this is, and Ms. Sutton and I went to the ITEP meeting, um, that took place last week, I believe.
Thursday.
Last Thursday, at the courthouse. That's the Industrial Tax Exemption Program. And, um, they currently, this is an expansion of that program due to the expansion of, uh, their, their current, um, plant out there, I guess is the best way. Operations. Think they're going into the electrical, steel, electrical, utility pole-type business. They are absolutely in compliance with the prior ITEP, um, deal. And if you want, uh, we attached, um, some of the numbers, um, that, what the, what we would, what the exemption would cost the city over the lifetime of this ITEP, uh, program, which I believe is five years, if I'm not mistaken. Um, it's, um, it would, um, it would basically be a trade-off for more opportunity, more jobs. Um, they're looking at welders primarily, is, if, if I remember from the meeting correctly.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And, um, you know, I think with, you know, pretty hefty salaries. But they are in compliance. They've always been in compliance. They've been in this area for approximately thirty years, um, so. Um, but we've had absolutely no, um, problems with them remaining in compliance. Ms. Sutton is the city's member of that ITEP, um, program or commission. This is, this is a little bit different than, than the current ITEP. When Governor Landry went in, the, uh, the commission, um, it changed. The rules and the regulations. Now the commission is approved by the state of Louisiana, then the commission itself has the last word. It consists of, you know, the police jury, the sheriff, everybody who collects, um, taxes, sales tax, and property tax, and things of that nature. It, I believe it's going to cost the city around somewhere in the neighborhood of ninety-six thousand dollars over five years, with the trade-off, of course, being greater opportunity. Was it ninety-six, Ms. Sutton?
Ninety-six, yes.
Do you have anything else, Ms. Sutton, you'd like to add? Okay.
Thank you.
Any, any hard questions for Ms. Sutton?
I've been trying to get her up here, she doesn't want to come up.
Oh, come on, it's so fun.
Just something real quick, Mr. President. Don't forget to look into BIPSTL possibly. They have a welding program. I don't know if y'all have ever connected that dot, but they've been fantastic in my district and in the area, and they put out some amazing welders. So just kind of speaking of that.
Thank you for that hot take, because we're looking for more right now.
Were you going to go there? I just, I've been really impressed with what they do there.
It's right around the corner, friendly.
Anything else? Anything for Selectson or for Ms. Sutton?
Is any, I mean, Ms. Sutton's here if anybody'd like to ask her anything.
We just wanted her to stand up.
Thank y'all so much.
Make sure you print your name and address on there if you have it. Okay.
You don't have to, Denise.
We know where you are.
All right, counsel, if there's nothing further, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to amend ordinance 107 of 2007 to reflect several necessary changes to stay in compliance with Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality, first reading.
So move. Second.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Maggio. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? Counsel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries.
I just electronically voted to.
Yeah, I know. It's...
It popped up.
It rolls, it's rolling. I've, I've notified the company again.
Okay.
Introduce an ordinance for public utilities to create a part-time wastewater plant operator for the Red River Treatment Plant, first reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Cliff Smith, second by Councilwoman Ross. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council?
Uh, yeah, Mr. President, I do.
Okay. Mr. Thompson's here, ready to answer all your tough questions.
Yeah. I, I knew, I knew this day would come.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor.
That y'all deleted some positions and rolled that up into salaries. Is this a position that is empty right now?
Uh, no, sir, it will be empty at the first of the year, which that operator is going over to the water treatment plant. What we're doing is taking advantage of the time remaining with the existing operator at the wastewater treatment plant, hiring on this gentleman as part-time to train and fill that gap till the first of the year, in which the budget will be in accordance.
All right, then we'll just have a net neutral change after that. Okay. All right, that, that's fine. I just wanted, I just wanted a little clarification on that. I have no problem with somebody learning before they take over a position.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you, Todd.
Any other questions? Counsel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance declaring two fire trucks surplus to the needs of the Bossier City Fire Department and authorizing the sale of said vehicles, first reading.
So move. Second.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Maggio. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? Comment from the fire chief?
Yeah. Chief, oh, come on, Brad.
How many more days, Brad? Three meetings.
Three meetings.
We didn't get Andy up here.
All right, counsel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance declaring lots eight, nine, and 10 of the Nellie subdivision surplus to the needs of the city of Bossier City, first reading.
So move. Second.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Maggio. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council?
Yeah, where, where is this subdivision?
Yeah, nobody knows.
I don't know where this is.
Do y'all know where this is?
I was, I'm not certain. Ms. Nottingham asked me to draft this ordinance. Apparently, there are some vacant lots that are, that somebody is interested in purchasing, owned by the city. Mr. Ray might be able to enlighten us.
I know a little bit about it, not much. I just, it, it is not far. It's a very old subdivision. I'm certain it's in Mr. Maggio's district, because it's really not far from his store. It's right off K-Side. It's an old neighborhood, not far from where they've built Chasing Aces now. And there is, if I, if I'm thinking this is the one that, that, if I'm thinking of that, I think that's what we're doing.
Do you have a street, do you have a street name?
It's, it's old streets that were, that were abandoned, or they hadn't been abandoned. It's old streets that have disappeared. It's like that area down around...
So it would have, so it would be back behind the levee there where the, about where the old dump was.
Yes, yes.
Correct, okay.
There are some people that own some of the tiny lots, and we've agreed to put it up and declare them surplus, and then they're going to go out and try to purchase more. And what, what Ms. Nottingham told them was that if, if they purchase all of the ones and get merchantable title to that, then they will come to the council and to the mayor and ask for the streets, the existing old streets, to be, what's the right word? They'd be...
Abandoned?
Abandoned, thank you, thank you, thank you, Madam Clerk. Abandoned, and then, and then that would unify ownership. But this person has a lot to do even after these are declared surplus. So we've had them appraised. I don't know what the appraisal is, but it's not much, but they're very tiny lots. But I just, I know that I was on the periphery of it last week, and I know with her not being here, I just wanted to give you all that information.
And it would still have to come back to the council, that once, if the council does vote to declare them surplus, then the council would have to vote to sell them basically for appraised value pursuant to law.
Okay.
Counsel, is there any other questions? All right.
If I can add something, Ms. McGraw just pointed out she's aware of which ones they are and says she has a map. She just needed confirmation, so she can get that to the council.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, counsel, anything else? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance amending the existing management contract between the city of Bossier City and ASM Global LLC, first reading.
So move. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Ross, second by Councilman Hammond. See, Mr. Tyler is here. If you want to come up, if you have anything you'd like to say.
Good afternoon, everybody. Tyler Slanovek, General Manager on behalf of ASM Global at Brookshire Grocery Arena. Just wanted to thank everybody, the council, the mayor, the city, the citizens for their support. 25 years, we've been managing the venue since day one. So exciting to be continuing to do this and the opportunity to extend our management agreement. We have a great slate of events coming up in 2026 and several more to add. So, you know, we're 25 years old, and we're just hitting our stride to get right back in the swing of things. So excited about continuing our relationship with the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. Does any, anybody have anything? No? Yeah, go ahead.
I, I just have a question. There's a lot of talk around town, people telling us that we need to get out of this business, that it's, tell me why we need to keep this building and you guys manage it?
I mean, we've, we've welcomed over 7 million guests in 25 years to Bossier City. We've had people come from every single one of the 50 states in the country to come to entertainment shows, everybody from the Eagles to Paul McCartney, multiple Garth Brooks sellouts. We just announced Cody Johnson, the comeback, a show that every single venue in the country wants. You know, they like to say that in our business, it's the best, they outkick your coverage, and I think we're doing nothing but that. We have five shows to announce here in the next 30 days that we're going to be bringing in 2026, in addition to the ones that we've already announced, is, you know, there's no better way to get people to come together as a community than live music, and that's really something to be said for that. We just added the arena football team starting in 2026 as well, so we're going to be adding seven to 10 family entertainment events to our calendar of already great, top-tier talent. So really exciting times to be at the arena and continuing to be able to do what we do and make a difference and continue to be an anchor for South Bossier expansion.
Thank you, that's what I needed to hear.
Anybody else have anything? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just also add that all of our parish high schools use that place as graduation spot as well.
Yep.
I think we've got the state championship wrestling matches coming back in the spring?
Yeah, we're working with Visitree Port Bossier and the Sports Commission to continue to host the high school wrestling state championships. We're putting together a bid to bring some collegiate basketball to the event. We also host collegiate wrestling, and we've been doing that for the last three years. Like you said, we are a great community asset. We host three LSUs graduations from the folks on the other side of the river, all the Bossier Parish graduations, and now we've even gotten into De Soto Parish and hosting their graduation every year as well. So continuing to develop and be an asset to the community is what we're here for.
Anything else?
Yeah, I mean, I just kind of add, I mean, I, I know that we all look at the arena as it, it costs us money every year, what we could be doing with stuff like that, but also the arena, when we're looking to attract younger individuals, couples coming here, it all falls back to a quality of life, that if we don't have that here, if we don't have a place that people can go to concerts, go to Disney on Ice, you know, every, there's something a little bit for everything. I mean, honestly, one of my favorite events y'all are fixed to have in November is the National Black Rodeo Finals. It's one of the best rodeos, if you've ever been to it. Heck of athletes that come, come there for those two days. But it, it's something that you have to have in order for a city to thrive and grow, whether it, it costs us money or if we make money. It's just, it's, it's one of those things that you've got to have.
Yeah, the quality of life is definitely something, giving people things to do on nights and weekends, bring their family out. We just wrapped up Disney on Ice a couple weeks ago in September. We had two sold-out shows in the last 60 days. Even events like the Jehovah's Witnesses Convention that may not have the appeal of a concert or an entertainment show, bringing 30,000 people each week for two straight weeks in the summer, people that are coming to our restaurants, people that are going and staying in our hotels, people that are going to our local shops, people that are coming to spend money and generate that tax revenue on top as well, is really, they're really some of the draws for us to be able to stay competitive and in drawing young professionals to come here and stay and live.
And we're working on getting a hotel down there.
That would greatly appreciate it.
That'll be good.
Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
Mr. Jacobs, I know I've looked over the amendments to it, but is there anything that you'd like to point out or add that's important?
It's basically, it's just an amendment to the existing contract, which of course amends it, so it has to be approved by the city council. It's extending the life of the current contract, I believe for five years, if I'm not mistaken, you know, with an option then to renew at the end of that period. Plus, there's also, it's my understanding that there's a $3 fee per ticket that is charged, you know, and that's going to increase to $5. That's a, a basically parking fee, and a dollar of that will go to ASM Global, and the other $4 will be retained by the city for any type of capital maintenance improvements, you know, things of that nature. That ordinance, if the council does vote to extend or amend the contract, then we have an ordinance prepared that we will have to amend. That existing ordinance goes from $3 to $5, with the city keeping four, and ASM Global, I believe, getting one, so.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs.
That's per ticket. And there's certain, there's certain exemptions, you know, for things, but, but that's generally the, that's the, the whole gist of the...
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. President, Mr. Jacobs, one thing I didn't see in here, and that may, may be a completely different contract, is the fee that our first responders are paid for working events down there. Is that a, is that a different contract that we have?
I don't know if we have a contract with, with ASM Global for that. We just have a set rate that our police officers are paid for off-duty security. I think it's, that's negotiated between ASM Global and the Police Department.
I, I know at one time we had talked about their, their fee going up if...
It has been...
If it has a, they're having a function that is more than 5,000 people, you know, like Lady Wilson, we had 14,000 something people down there, and, you know, that's a lot for, for these guys to handle.
Councilman Hammond, if I can add, I think that that's just, I mean, the arena is a large, it's a large venue, obviously, but when any, anyone needs police coverage, they reach out to the Police Department. I don't think that's built into the contract. I think that that is just part of what the Police Department works out, and depending on, like you're saying, depending on what type of show it is, it, that, that is how they craft, how many officers they'll have. And I'm sure on some big events, I think there's even times where they have to ask for other agencies, you know, to, to step in. But what they're paid is a separate deal, it's not part of that contract. It's just part of what they get through the Police Department. I think that's right, Ms. Mayor, is that, I think that's, I think that's how it's running.
Basically, the reason for that is, is that it's, it's an off-duty, non-governmental function, and so that when the police officers are paid in that manner, we're not responsible for retirement, you know, things of that, certain costs that would be incurred by the city if it were part of their, their duties or a city-sponsored contract.
Okay. One, one other thing, and I, I know Tyler sent me an email on this, and he also sent the mayor. I would like to see down there at the arena, a strategic traffic plan that we come up with. That is the number-one gripe. Everybody loves the arena, but they do not like that it takes them two hours to get out of it afterwards. So that, that is the only bad reflection that we have down there on that, is that, and I know Chief Howgan and his guys are working on that, so that is something that we would like, and I know Tyler would like to see brought forth to help with everything down there with him.
Just to go back to the, the fee, is that is one of the key amendments of the, of the renewal option, is go to three, from $3 currently to $5, which is a, ordinance has been in place for several years and has allowed us to make significant improvements, things like video boards, things like HVAC systems, things like redoing the roof. As we are in our 25th year, we are getting close to the end of useful life for a lot of hot-type, top-dollar equipment, things like plumbing, things like fire safety, communications, transportation, infrastructure, those types of things are items that are obviously getting more expensive, as is everything in today's economy. So increasing that from three to five, with $4 being sent to the city, which is passed on to the consumer, allows us to continue to stay competitive in the landscape and make sure that we can make the improvements that are necessary to be able to have great events, be able to get top acts, be able to have a safe place for people to come, be able to have the infrastructure from restroom facilities to concession facilities. All of those items are funded from that restoration fund, which helps our capital plan. And then the $1 would go to a parking and transportation fund within the venue budget, which we put towards things like being able to add infrastructure throughout the complex to have a safer way to get in and a quicker way to get out at the end of the night, as he mentioned. It is our number-one complaint that we receive from our guests at the end of the events in their surveys.
Thank you. Anything else? No? All right, thank you, Tyler. Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. All right, counsel, go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution for Parks and Recreation to fill a youth recreation supervisor position in the Parks and Recreation Division and backfill any vacant position this creates, first and final reading.
So move. Second.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Cochrane. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? Counsel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Approve parade permit fee waiver for Run Like a Night 5K on March 21st, 2026.
So move. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Ross, second by Councilman Cochrane. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? Counsel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries.
No reports today?
Yes, sir, no reports. We're hoping to have the calendar out at the next council meeting, the calendar for next year's council meetings and for the administrative council. We're just waiting on some issues to be cleared up regarding to the renovations.
Yep, absolutely. We'll hopefully have an announcement on where we'll be meeting next year, next week. Mayor Chandler, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. Mayor Tom Arson and myself are going to have a, a prayer breakfast this Thursday at 7:00 at the Shreveport Convention Center. It's one year it's here and one year it's over there, so it's, it'll be over there Thursday morning at 7:00. We had a lot of change, change of command at Barxville today. General Bucier changed it over to Stephen L. Davis. He's the commander of Barxville now. Then there'll be, this Thursday will be another armaghas that's going to give his up to Ty Newman. So we have a lot of changes in Barxville. Also, my buddy James Burton, the James Burton Foundation, is having a concert this Friday at Horseshoe, and all the contributions, all the sales of the tickets goes to students in Bossier for guitars for students in Bossier Parish this year. And it's going to be people like John Foster, he won the American Idol, he's going to be